Good evening and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. The regular meeting of the City Planning Commission will be called to order and we'll begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as advisory board to the city council. It is a responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendation on land use and zoning matters. Conditional use permits and minor amendment requests will have final action here this evening unless appealed to the city council in writing within five days. Any decision made on preliminary subdivision plans or future land use amendment requests tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the third council meeting of the month. Any decision made on rezoning requests, major amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the first council meeting of the month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here in the Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. Any action taken here tonight on a final development plan is final. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the commission's consent agenda, planning staff and the Planning Commission applies the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the City 2015 Land Use Plan. Second, the planning staff recommends approval of the request. And third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the ordinance. Once the consent agenda items are approved, you are free to leave. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on each item. Second, the petitioner will be requested to come forward and make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner, anyone from the audience who wishes to address a particular agenda item shall be recognized. Then, the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission other than staff move to the podium microphone, identify themselves, and state their address for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask you please either turn off or silence your cellphone and pager. This meeting is being televised on Channel 16 and will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, and Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation.
I'll start by reading the consent agenda. Item one is approval of the January 2nd, 2008 minutes of the regular meeting. Item two is Platts. Item three is a rezone from AG Agriculture District to the Briarwood Estates North Plan Development District, the RC Recreation Conservation District, the RD Residential District, RS2 Residential District, to allow single-family, multifamily residential, commercial, and office land uses at East 57th Street and South Sycamore Avenue. Item four is a rezone AG Agriculture District to RS2 Residential District for an elementary school at East 10th Street and Six Mile Road. Item five is a conditional use permit in the C2 General Commercial District to allow motor vehicle display and sales within an existing commercial parking lot, Parkard Market at 3709 West 10th Street. Item six, which has been deferred by the applicant, is a final development plan in Subarea D, Meadows-on-the-River PD Plan Development District, to construct a commercial building with apartments at South Louise Avenue at West Shirley Avenue. Item seven has also been deferred by the applicant. It's a final development plan in Subarea A, Interstate Crossing Business Park PD Plan Development District, to construct a multi-tenant building with a cafe and drive-up window at South Solberg Avenue and South Broadband Lane. Item eight is the final development plan in Subarea C, Diamond Valley PD Plan Development District, to construct four-plex apartments at West 73rd Street and South Santa Rosa Circle. And that is the end of the consent agenda. Is there anyone from the audience who would object to any of the consent agenda items? If not, is there any planning commissioners that would like to move any of the consent agenda items? All right, if not, keeping in mind that Items 6 and Item 7 have been deferred, is there a motion to approve the revised consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Revised consent agenda has been approved. And now for the regular agenda, there's three changes. Item 10, which is rezone from O Office District to the C2 General Commercial District to allow a motel expansion at 101 North Blaine Avenue, that has been deferred by the applicant. Item 11 is a rezone RD and RA1 Residential District to the Bronto PD Plan Development District, South Ebenezer Avenue and West Graceland Court, that's been deferred by the applicant. And Item 16, conditional use permit in C4 Plan Commercial District, to allow an outdoor on-sale alcohol establishment at West 38th Street and South Carolyn Avenue, that has been withdrawn by the applicant. So please note those three changes. With that, is there a motion to approve the revised regular agenda?
I'll move to approve the revised regular agenda.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The revised regular agenda is approved. Our first item on the regular agenda then is Item 9, a resolution amending the future land use map as a part of the Sioux Falls 2015 Growth Management Plan, petition number 2008-01-13, at Six Mile Road and East 10th Street, from the single-family and multifamily residential land uses to an allocation of commercial, office, institutional, multifamily land uses. Staff report, please.
Good evening. My name is Steve Randall. I'll be representing planning staff on this and other items this evening. The applicant is proposing to revise the allocation of approved land uses at this location from single-family and multifamily to approximately 8.3 acres of commercial, 5.9 acres of office, 13.6 acres of multifamily residential. And then the remaining portion of the unassigned property will be single-family in that legal description. The applicants are Steve Van Buskerk, Six Mile Partners. Size of the property is approximately 27.8 acres for the revised future land uses. Currently it's agricultural uses and drainage way. The applicant has stated that based on the growth of Sioux Falls at this location, they see a need for a small neighborhood commercial area available to residents who are going to live and work east of Six Mile Road. Staff comments that the corner of East 10th and Six Mile Road is a collector intersection and should be used as a transition between regional commercial to the south in the Galleria and residential properties to the north. On that basis, staff is recommending deferral of the application. There are a number of other reasons given by the applicant for locating at this commercial -- locating commercial uses at this property, and those are given in your staff report. I will let the applicant address those if they feel it's necessary. We've had no calls on this, and that concludes staff report.
Any questions for Steve?
Mr. Chair, if these two roads become regional collector streets, what would the driveway setbacks be on that from the corner then, Steve? In other words, how far back would they have to go to get access to this?
Quarter mile.
Does that quarter mile jive with their -- what they've got there?
10th Street is an approved access already, so they are currently proposing to use that as part of a subdivision plan in the future. And the school site and the subject property were previously plotted to allow for that to happen.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Steve? All right, thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Good evening. Steve Van Buskerk, 5101 South Nevada Avenue. Got a couple comments, I guess, updates on where we're at with our project here, but happy to answer any questions also. We had, I guess, going down my notes, we had a neighborhood meeting here on Monday night to go over this plan, sent the notice out to the -- you know, to the neighbors around and actually talked to the three adjoining landowners about the plan. In general, the one landowner to the south that's doing the Arbor's Edge subdivision, you know, they had some concerns about the multifamily. They understood that this is just a 2015 Growth Plan Amendment. We're going to still be working on our application for rezoning after this action tonight. So we're working on our preliminary plan, actually having a meeting with the city tomorrow to work out the final details in our plan. So once we get that done, then we'll get that to that group and show it to them and see if they're comfortable with it. After we talked a little bit on the phone, our multifamily was -- our west -- excuse me, our east property line was west of their west property line is what we came up with, and that seemed to make them feel more comfortable, but we'll have some more conversation before we come back next month. I met with the other neighbors to the south. They seem to have no particular issues with our land. You know, drainage was, you know, one concern there, and we're working with them, and that kind of plays into our plan a little bit, because if you switch to what we're proposing on that plan, it looks like some big blocks now, but you're going to see it come back under the rezone with some, you know, some big RCs of two-plus acres, because if you switch to the aerial photograph, that one, you can see there's a large drainage channel there. Actually, the neighbor to the south is talking about he's seen seven feet of water, that last line was drawn through there. So we're working on some of that stuff. We're trying to get our arms around this. It came up kind of quick with the school, so that'll all come back during the rezone. Then the neighbors to the east, we met with them, and they had a concern about that driveway access that was brought up here about the access point at Six Mile. They're concerned about where that comes across Six Mile, so actually we're meeting tomorrow on that, too. So trying to address those concerns as we can, so when we come back for our rezoning application, we can have that handled. I think that catches my thoughts. I don't know if you have any questions for me?
Mr. Chair, staff is recommending a deferral on this, Steve.
I think they've got some things they want to work out with you yet. Would a deferral create a hardship for you at this particular point in time?
Well, with the defer -- what the goal is, is the school wants to go to bid next month, you know, so and the school's plans are tied to, we're going to be running the preliminary plan through, so we kind of need to get going if we want to get our plans done by our July is kind of our target, so we can have a road out there and they can get water, because water's coming up off of 10th Street. So, you know, every delay is going to, you know, hurt us on the back end of actually getting the street in. You know, if we deferred, if I'm right, we can, if we deferred this month, we can run the major land use amendment right in front of a rezoning request next month. So in that sense, it probably wouldn't hurt. Nice to keep moving ahead, but I guess that's your option. So, you know, but again, what we're trying to do is get it, you know, get a preliminary plan organized and done now, so we can get some construction plans in July is what we're trying to do.
I think staff wants some input in on that and wants to work with you on that, and I think that might be the reason for the deferral, but maybe we can ask Jeff here in a minute.
Yeah, and, you know, as far as that goes, I mean, we're, you know, we got a couple different theories with that road on 10th Street. You know, they're calling it a collector, but it's got 100 feet of right-of-way. And when we first asked, when we prepared all these plans, we said, "What's the setback I have to be from 10th Street?" And they said 660 feet, you know, so which is, you know, more towards, you know, it's not quite an arterial, so we're kind of in that collector arterial gray zone, and we -- that's what we're meeting on tomorrow, actually. So, you know, it's, you know, I think all this, if we went ahead with this 2015 plan, we could have that, a lot of these questions answered by the time we came back for rezone, you know, next month for the next application.
Thank you, Steve.
Any other questions?
Steve, you sound like within the next week you're having several meetings with landowners and with the city as well?
Tomorrow, we're meeting with the city, yeah. And actually some of the landowners, the Andersons across the street to the east.
Do you think by the commission meeting, a lot of what the concerns are will be able to be solidified prior to that?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. That's why we're trying to get into this, for this major amendment now, so we could hit the application deadline on Monday and, you know, through the course of next month, get all this stuff addressed, and we come back with a solid rezone.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item?
Well, though I think there are some moving parts to this, I think that -- I'm sorry.
My name's Robert Van Beek. My address is 1 East 10th. I met with Van Buskerk Monday night, my dad did. I think they're good people. I looked into his eyes, I shook his hand. I think they're sincere people. But what me and my family have run into in the last three, four years with the city and the county, where we get blindsided at the very end, and they say, "This is how it is." There ain't anybody here going to tell me it doesn't happen. I know it happens. All I say is, however the drainage is, when the decisions made or before that were talked to, it hasn't been this last development. We told the city, and we told them, "I realize you're the planning and zoning, but you have a lot to do with it." I spoke with them before about water running on our land, and they still ran it on our land. And all the cities said, "Well, we can't help it, it's temporary." You don't run water on somebody's land and then tell, "Well, it's temporary." There, I, as far as the development, they have every right to buy land and develop, and have nothing against that. That's what makes capitalism in this country, that's what makes millionaires, and there's quite a few of them in this room. But don't step on the little guy that's been there 40-some years and has paid his taxes. Don't do that. I'm not going to put up with it. I have done. We've been through the sewer pipe, we've been through development to the east, we talked flack over when we want to put a tower on our land. They took it to the state's attorney after the contract was signed three months and see it was illegal. I bet it don't happen too many places. Believe me, we're tired of the crap. That's all I got to say. I think they're good people, they have every right to do with their land what they want to. But I want to be informed. I don't want to see a developer come in like we did before, here come a contractor and run the water on our land. Never run like that before, but it does now. That's what I'm trying to, I'm just trying to avoid that. Hope come to us, where we lived for some 50 years.
And just so we know, where is your land in relationship to the --
Right across the road.
To which direction?
To the south.
To the south, okay.
Right on the corner.
Okay. Any questions for Robert?
They've got it marked on the screen here, David.
I'm sorry.
They've got it circled.
Thank you, Ken.
Any questions?
Any questions for Robert?
You understand that the Van Buskers will have to come back before us several times?
That's, I know, that's, but we went through this before, that's why I'm standing here, and it still didn't do any good.
No, and I appreciate that. This is your public forum and your opportunity to speak, so I'm glad that you're here and we heard you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak on this item?
My name is Bob Pollak. My address is 8605 East 10th Street. I'm not against progress or this developer, but a lot of me and my neighbors, a lot of us have been, we moved out there, some of us more than 30 years ago, to get away from some of the bad elements of the city, one being the multifamily dwelling. I do maintenance at an apartment complex. I see this stuff every day. I don't want it in my backyard. I don't know why we need to have it there, not to mention there's a school going to be going up. Do we need those elements that close to a school? I don't think so. I haven't met with this developer, and it's not fair to judge somebody based on others' actions. But I'm right in the middle of this Arbor's Edge, and I have been stepped on, pushed around. I still don't have a road to drive out to 10th Street. I'm a half-mile away, and I still don't have access. The city doesn't do anything. I'm sitting out there. If it rains, good luck, Bob. That's about it. And nobody does anything. They do, it's unbelievable. And if you don't believe me, come April, when the snow melts and the spring rains come, I invite every one of you to my place for coffee and donuts. And when you get stuck in the mud, don't worry, I'm sure the city will be there to help you.
Hang on, Bob. Any questions?
Bob, can you tell us exactly where you're at in this?
I'm on the south edge of Arbor's Edge Development. They tore my driveway out before they ever gave me an access road. The city did nothing. I've been calling, there's hardly a week goes by, I don't talk to planning and zoning, city engineers, the street department. Every time it snowed so far this year, I've had to call the street department to ask them when they're going to plow me. They just leave me sitting out there. I'm a half a mile away from any road that gets any maintenance.
Who tore, who tore your driveway out, Bob?
Thank you. All right, anybody else care to speak on this item? We'll take one more and then move on.
Kevin Delima, 8250 East 10th Street. My property is the, right, is the first place on the north side, right? I believe my, the west side of my property borders the property in question, but I wasn't informed of any other meetings in regards to the development, so this is all new to me. But my concern was, I just moved out there just a little over a year ago. Before I moved, I called and inquired with the previous, with the owners of the property to see what their plans were. At that time, I was told there were ways out, they had nothing planned on the books, but it was going to be nice lots and residential homes. If there was going to be high rises and apartment buildings boarding my property line, I probably wouldn't have moved out there. But my concern would be what's going on the edge of my property line, you know, if it would be apartment buildings or 24-plex garages or, you know, I just don't know. My concern would be what's going out just to the west of me. My house is built with a nice views to the west, I have picture windows facing that way, so it's, it's a concern to me what goes up in that area.
Okay. Any questions for Kevin?
Kevin, I think that opportunity will come down the road as they bring us a preliminary plan for the whole development. You have an opportunity to see what they've got planned there. At that time, you'll have a chance to kind of comment and tell us how you feel about that. I think they're just looking at this piece right now between 10th Street and the new school that's being put in out there. But the process have come along where they will have to show a supplementary plan that'll show what will be to the west of you.
That would be my concern, what's, you know, what's going to go in next to me, I guess, so moved out there just to get away from, you know, some of the city elements.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, I think we'll close public testimony and look for commission action on Item 9.
Mr. President, would it be possible to talk to Jeff for just a second? Jeff, staff is recommending a deferral on this. If we do defer it, is it possible to bring it back next time and kind of address both issues that he would normally address next month at the same time?
Yes, it is, is the quick answer. Planning Commission and planning staff has a policy in place that if Planning Commission defers a final development plan, it can be on the same agenda as the rezoning. An applicant and planning staff cannot put those on the same agenda. Planning Commission wants them separated for exactly the same reason that we're doing it tonight. This gives us a great opportunity for the public to come out, look at a land use, it's a nice general conversation about, these are the types of land uses we have before we jump right into, this is what's RS2, this is RA1, this is C4, and you start talking about those very complicated legal discussions. Tonight, we're having a conversation about what types of land uses can be out there. Next month, if you'd like to defer it, we'd have it on the same agenda. First, you'd do the land use, vote on that, you'd go forward to the rezoning, vote on that, you'd have the preliminary plan, you'd look at the utilities, and you'd have that, so it's possible to do it. Staff's questions and concerns, again, were everything that Steve Van Busker brought up. He has a collector street that has 100 feet of right-of-way that's really not correct. I mean, it's a city issue where you don't have 100-foot collectors. He has a large drainage area, and Shawnee can show that. That red area is not all going to be commercial. He's going to take a large chunk of his red out and show it as green, but how much now? Well, he doesn't know that until he really puts his utilities on there. So we were going to work through some of those details as staff. We can either approve this tonight or recommend deferral.
Jeff, a couple other comments from the other landowners out there. Bob apparently has a driveway or is having a difficult time getting to his property. Has that become a city issue? Is that responsibility for that fall on the city?
No, it does not. It's an issue that's come before the city, and it was before the City and Planning Commission from the very beginning. There's an easement that runs north and south on that line, and it's between those two property owners, and it's my understanding, and again, that's why it's not our issue, it's between those two property owners. And if there's disagreements between those property owners on that easement, you know this as well as I do, those are easements, they're not city easements, they're not Planning Commission easements, it's between two property owners.
Is the city, could the city be in any kind of position to help Bob out in a situation or that, or is his only recourse to get, seek some legal advice and?
Legal advice. And again, it's my understanding that they are already dealing with their legal issues.
Mr. Van Beek, with the water running over across the road onto his, when this is engineered, this is engineered to not allow that to happen, if I'm not mistaken?
Correct. And as well as Planning Commission, we hear this frequently. It's a real challenge in regards to, the people that have lived out there for 50 years, they know how much flows come across their property, and they can say, "There's more drainage coming across my property now." The challenge for staff as well as for anyone is to say, "But where is the drainage coming from? Is it coming from the adjacent property or," and again, this isn't even the complete area, "look at where that green drainage way goes. It goes up through Mystic, it goes up through Pine Lake Hills, it goes further to the west." I mean, even if Van Buskers don't do anything, there could be a significant amount of drainage that comes more and more down that drainage basin on the Van Beek's property. It's not something that we want. We want to try to restrict, as you and I talked today, we want to try to restrict developments on how much drainage they put in here. It's something that we're looking into to help these property owners address, but it's a real challenge to say, "This is your drainage," and landowners say, "That's not my drainage coming off my property."
Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate it.
Any other questions for Jeff? Paul is up here. Okay, thank you. Is there commission action on Item 9?
I would make a motion to defer this item for 30 days till the next meeting, which would give staff a chance to sit down with the Van Buskers and work through some of the issues they have. That'd be my motion.
There's a motion for a 30-day deferral. Is there a second?
I will second.
All right, there's a motion and second for a deferral. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the deferral say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item number nine is deferred until the next meeting. Item 10 was deferred by the applicant, and that's a rezone from the O Office District to the C2 Commercial District to allow a motel expansion at 101 North Blaine Avenue. Again, that's been deferred by the applicant. Item 11 is also deferred by the applicant. That's a rezone RD and RA1 Residential Districts to the Bronto PD Plan Development District, South Ebenezer Avenue and West Graceon Court. That one has been deferred. Item 12 is the next one we'll hear. That's a rezone RS1 Residential District and Boulder Ridge Estates Plan Development District to Three Fountains Plaza Plan Development District for mixed-use, commercial, office, multifamily residential development at Northwest Corner of West 85th Street and South Western Avenue. Staff report, please.
Last month, you looked at the future land use amendment that would allow this zoning to come back before you. At that time, we talked about a mixed land use concept, and it was indicated on the plan as a mixed-use area, giving it a new color on our future land use map. At that time, we also had neighborhood input into the plan itself that was presented. It was a concept plan for development of the property. The applicant has now moved forward with that concept plan and has been meeting with neighbors to hammer out regulations that would guide the development of this future land use plan, and now included in that, those discussions is a rezoning. And the rezoning plan has been included in your packet of information and is summarized and described in the subarea regulations. The various subareas of this planned development address the types of uses, the character of development, the location of buildings and parking, a concept for landscaping setbacks and amenities. Those are also described in the subarea regulations. Those regulations are presented and summarized in your staff report. They've also been given to you as an addendum or as an additional packet of information, light reading, that is fairly detailed, it's twenty-some pages long. And what I would like to do this evening is to summarize the intent of each subarea, knowing that the developer has spent time with the neighborhood going over the details, and then allow the developer to come forward and respond to any questions about details, and also respond to neighborhood concerns. In Subarea A, which is primarily the mixed-use area in this development, it's central to the location of the planned development district, and it is the intent of Subarea A to be a planned commercial development at the center of the PD. And it's described as buildings in that subarea to be designed to accommodate smaller shops, galleries, and restaurants. The subarea description goes on to describe architectural treatments, forms, materials, locations, and types of uses. The important thing there, I think, is that in the subarea regulations and in conjunction with the neighborhood, they've identified uses that they include as permitted, permitted uses in that subarea. Making the statement that any other use would require a public hearing. They would have to come back and do a public hearing, a major amendment to allow any other use that's not shown on that list. And I think that was one of the major items that they wanted to get worked out with the neighborhood. In Subarea B, the intent of that subarea is to include well-designed office or commercial buildings. Buildings to be placed as close to the Eighty-Fifth Street property line as possible, with the concept to internalize parking to the subarea. And that is to keep that parking and that traffic and circulation away from adjacent developments. Again, uses in that subarea are restricted to those specifically permitted. Subareas C, the intent is to include well-designed office or commercial buildings, and it requires buildings to be placed along Eighty-Fifth Street property line to internalize the parking. Uses are restricted. Subarea D, the intent is to allow for unique live-work neighborhood transitioning from commercial retail east of the subareas and the single-family residential subareas to the west. That's kind of a new concept that they are proposing to include in this planned development, the live-work concept. Basically, individual structures which are occupied by residents and the people who work or provide commercial services or office-type professional services in that same building. And they provided us with a concept plan that's attached to the subarea regulations and would be approved as part of this rezoning. If that concept is changed or proposed to change, they would also have to come back to you for review and public approvals. Subarea D then goes on to say that these units are to have the same general approach to storefront development as in Subarea A on one side of the building, and then residential development on the other side of the building. So it's kind of a unique architectural concept, as well as a land use concept that they're proposing here. And that's to foster architectural continuity within the development and promote pedestrian activity, including walks, walkways, and bike paths to be incorporated to provide that connectivity and tie together existing neighborhoods into the development and make that connection possible. Parking is provided for each lot by a combination of garage spaces for residential components and onsite parking with a private boulevard street in front of each unit. Uses are restricted. Subarea E. Buildings are to be developed within the general design considerations of the development as described in Subarea A. Parking will be provided for each lot use by a combination of garage spaces for residential component and onsite parking with a private boulevard in front of each unit. Subarea F, it is the intent of this subarea to include well-designed office buildings. Subarea G, the intent of this subarea is to extend the design characteristics of Subarea D to a higher density of residential use at the Eighty-Fifth Street corridor. Subarea H, the intent of that district is to extend the design characteristics of Subarea D to the Eighty-Fifth Street corridor. Uses are restricted to single-family detached dwellings and neighborhood utilities. So now they're getting very specific in their transitional uses from the commercial and office development to the surrounding neighborhood. Subarea I, it is the intent to continue the single-family residential of the existing homes within Prairie Hills South PD, now being more specific, as dwelling, single-family detached. Now, normally, we, we encourage developers to not include conventional, single-family detached type development in their PD. However, in this case, working with the neighbors, it becomes an important part of the zoning process to include specifically, single-family detached dwellings that provide the transition into the neighborhood. And that's really what we've been after for quite a while now, is for developers to include those transitional uses in their development. Subarea J, it is the intent of the subarea to provide residentially detailed building uses for which, which will serve as a transition north and west from single-family to a slightly higher-density residential adjacent to this subarea to the east. So there is some multifamily, specific multifamily-type development going on. Final development plans will illustrate landscape buffers and screening utilized to separate building elements from existing single-family uses. That pretty much summarizes the subarea development intent and character of development as shown in an initial development plan, a parking master plan, and a development concept for the live-work centers. The applicants remain the same, Clayton Jameson in Site Two. It's a twenty-eight-point-five acre site, which is currently vacant. The mixed-use concept now is being pretty well-defined, I think, for this development. It's convenient to the intended market area, it has vehicular access to major streets, it minimizes traffic impact on the adjacent uses by reducing through streets or collector connections into existing neighborhoods. It is an orderly expansion of institutional uses near residential areas. There is design compatibility with adjacent uses and the way the concept plan has been presented, and it includes retail, multifamily, and business technology land uses. It's allowing a planned and coordinated mix of land uses which are compatible and are harmonious, but previously discouraged by conventional zoning procedures, and that's a definition of planned development with the i's dotted and the t's crossed. I think one of the unique concepts here, too, is that the mixed-use category is based on a parking ratio. How do you calculate whether they, through the final development plan process, start bumping up against what's allowed for commercial, multifamily, and res, single-family residential? The definition, by definition, we say, no more than fifty percent of the mixed-use area should be commercial, no more than thirty percent should be office, and no more than twenty percent should be residential. As we do the final development plan approval of each individual project, we draw down on that potential capacity. The developer has come up with a way of measuring or estimating the amount of commercial, office, and residential development based on parking capacity, and the concept plan is presented here and being approved. Those numbers have been included in a parking ratio and attached to the subarea regulations that you're approving, and in the course of approving final development plans as they come before you, will draw down on that parking capacity. Each time a commercial use is approved and the parking requirements are met for that commercial use in that final development plan, we draw down on that commercial parking capacity that's identified in this chart. So, as we proceed through development in the, in this project, we know that we'll be getting close to that fifty-thirty-twenty split of, of uses. At the time that there's no more land available or parking available to support commercial uses, that would be the end of that, unless a major amendment were brought forward for any additional development. Initial development plans are comprised of a boundary map, PD Subarea Boundary Map, an initial development concept plan, which we've been looking at here that shows the character of development, a master parking plan, a master parking plan allocation schedule, and a live-work site development and parking concept plan. That, in addition to what is standard language in a PD Subarea Regulation document, which is currently being reformatted from what you have received from the applicant, to fit the city's requirements for formatting, I believe that we're, we're at a point where we can recommend approval of the zoning proposal, the attached documents, and the subarea regulations as presented. This would go forward to the city council for another public hearing. The neighborhood would have an opportunity, again, to provide you with input, and I've had no calls from neighbors, I think they've just been working directly with the developer, which is good. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions?
Mr. Chair. Steve, what a, what a great job putting all this together. Has this been looked at by engineering? Or have these access points been looked at and?
Yes. A preliminary subdivision plan is required to be submitted in, in conjunction with the rezoning, and it has been, and it's later on this agenda. So the engineers have been looking at it and have provided comments to the applicant, which are currently being addressed, and it, staff is also recommending approval of that subdivision plan, that it can go forward with, with comments being addressed by the city engineer.
Thank you, Steve. I, I think what the neighbors want to say, and I think what I'm hearing, is what we see here is what will happen. If it's going to change from this, he would have to post the property, the neighbors would once again get a chance to comment, he'd come before this, this commission again.
That's correct.
Thank you, Steve.
Steve, is there any gas station or convenience store in that?
I'm going to let the applicant address that.
Any other questions for Steve? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Clayton Jameson, three-hundred South Main. Gas stations are not allowed, as well as, there, underneath all of this is an even bigger document, which is the covenants that are filed on this property, and that goes further to exclude certain things that just are absolutely not gonna be allowed. There's, there's a buffer in between that where there's, things could be okay if they were done in a, a proper way, and, and then that would come in front of the committee.
Clayton, I think you're the, the first developer to come in with a plan like this. I think it's an absolutely outstanding-looking plan, and it's really nice to see the way you've worked with the neighborhood, I think. There might be some neighbors here today that might differ with that, but I, I hope there isn't, but it's an exciting-looking plan. I wish you good luck on it.
Thank you. Again, I have to give credit to Bob Matt.
Any other questions for Clayton?
Okay, thank you.
Anyone from the audience care to speak in this item? Guess not. Is there commission action on item twelve?
I'd move for approval of item twelve.
I'll second.
This motion is second. Any further commission discussion?
I would just have to agree, Kenny, it's, it's an exciting concept, I think, exciting for Sioux Falls, it's exciting to see one this far down the road, and it's exciting to have the neighbors come all the way around, and I know there was a couple painful meetings in, but that's what the process is all about, so my hat's off to both of you gentlemen for taking the time. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, on item twelve, there's a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item twelve is recommended for approval. Item thirteen is a major amendment to Subarea B, Lundstrom Second Subdivision PD, Plan Development District to allow commercial development at West Sixty-Ninth Street and West Ralph Rogers Road. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Shawna Goldammer, representing planning staff on various items this evening. The Lundstrom's Plan Development District was created back in nineteen ninety-three. Subarea B allowed for commercial uses with office land uses transitioning along Ralph Rogers Road. Flexibility was allowed to establish the transitional land uses as the boundary for these uses was not specified. Instead, the regulations included the following language. Properties with street frontages along Ralph Rogers Road shall be limited to uses allowed in the O Office District. Subarea B has been expanded in the past in nineteen ninety-seven to include the corner of Sixty-Ninth and Louise for C Store and Gas Dispensing, and again in two thousand five to allow the B and G Milky Way. There have been four final development plans approved in Subarea B. Commercial uses established include the automotive dealership, drive-in restaurant. Office uses that are established along Ralph Rogers Road include the YWCA Daycare and Fitness Center. The applicant is proposing to revise the subarea boundaries, or, excuse me, the subarea regulations to allow commercial land uses within this previous subarea that allowed transitions. The applicant did defer at the staff's request in January and did schedule a neighborhood meeting. Those people who were invited to the neighborhood meeting, the list is included in your addendum packet, and also the sign-in sheet for those who attended the meeting is included as well. There are driveways serving the apartments adjacent to the subject property on the east side of Ralph Rogers Road. Sidewalks are required and are indicated. There is a bicycle route along Ralph Rogers Road. Because the application does offer, offer the opportunity for improved communication and cooperation among the city land developers and interested residents in the urbanization of new lands, staff does recommend approval of the major amendment. And that concludes staff report.
Any questions for Shawna? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Good evening. My name is Craig Rickert, thirty-one thirty West Fifty-seventh Street. One of the owners of the property. Three years ago, we purchased this piece of property. It was actually a thousand feet by two-hundred-and-fifty feet in width. On the north portion of this property, we developed the YWCA, and then this lot was left over. What we are doing tonight is asking for the, a major amendment to change the zoning on this particular piece of property, and like Shawna said, that we've had a neighborhood meeting. When we sent the notices out, we went quite a ways beyond what is normally required, so we, we ended up having the, the neighborhood meeting. Please keep in mind that this is one of three public meetings that we would have on developing this particular piece of property. We have this meeting, we have the city council, and then whatever building we would eventually build would come in in the final development plan.
Any questions for Craig?
Craig, the corner of Sixty-Ninth and Louise was rezoned for a convenience store some time ago. Are you the owner of, of that property also?
One other note that I want to make is that in our, in submitting this, what we, what we do, as we do in, in most what we do, as we do in, in most applications, is put on there what potentially could be developed on the property, kind of showing the building envelope and the parking and, and that type of thing. This application, again, is for a zoning change. The, we do not have anybody for this area. We put on an aggressive building on that particular application, but we don't have, I think have a deal set up for it right now.
Craig, I'll ask you, but maybe I should be asking staff when the time would come as far as an hour of operations for something like this. Is it at the final development plan? Thank you, Joe.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item?
Good evening. Thomas Falconer, fifty-nine oh five, South Lois Lane. My property is, uh, right there where your pointer is. I am a ways away from the area being proposed for possible construction of the C Store and retail spaces. I do appreciate the opportunity that the developer gave us in a public forum to address our concerns, of which mine are, would we allow, or would we like to see a C Store, which has the possibility of off-sale liquor, that close to a YWCA, which has daycare? There are numerous concerns that we raised, one of those being that mentioned. Second one being if the proposed C Store were to be installed in that location, on Ralph Rogers Road, there is minimal width for a gas tanker to turn. As of yesterday and today, there, since this last snowplow that we've had, there have been four vehicles that have not been ticketed and towed, and snowplows have been moved around and left. City police were out and talked to the people, the vehicles were moved, but there is less than four feet on one side, and you are always crossing the median to get in that area. My concern was that if nothing else is addressed with that, they are going to be creating more traffic flow, off-street parking, the street will get narrower and narrower as we go. Not saying that there shouldn't be room for growth in that area. One mention that was made was a possibility of a bank. That, I believe, was more warmly welcomed than a gas station. Hours of operation that they did include would possibly be from six to eleven, if it did go through as such. Myself, I can't do, can't change anything if it did go through, but I would accept that at least they would be closed. Lighting from the dealership goes all the way back into my property, which is almost four and a half blocks away. I see the backlights of the YWCA every night in my child's bedroom, in both my children's bedroom, and have asked them to turn down the lights. Possibly, we can again address that issue, but not here.
Okay. Any questions for Thomas?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else care to address this item? Okay, don't see any. Is there commission action on item thirteen?
Motion for approval on item thirteen.
I second.
This is a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I think when the time comes up for a final development plan on this, I, I, I hope we're going to address the hours of operation. I'm not sure how much latitude we can have as far as off-sale liquor. I'm sure staff will advise us of that when the time comes. If I've had any concern with this, it's, it's probably the, the traffic Ralph Rogers Road gets from Western Avenue over to Sixty-Ninth. I think it's become a shortcut for people trying, coming up Western to get over to Louise, but I'm not sure this is going to create more traffic because this is here. I'm going to support this, but with some reservation when it comes to the final development as far as hours of operation.
Any other discussion? Okay. On item thirteen, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item thirteen is recommended for approval. Item fourteen is a major amendment to Subarea B, Whisper Ridge PD, Plan Development District, to change subarea boundaries at South Southeastern Avenue and East Whisper Trail. Staff report, please.
The applicant is Tim Stenberg, and it's a sixteen-acre site that's currently vacant. Part of an existing PD, part of an existing approved preliminary subdivision plan. The applicant is proposing to increase the size of Subarea C, as shown on the initial development plan approved, from fourteen point two acres to sixteen point one acres by changing subarea boundaries, and also by getting a minor amendment approved to the subdivision plan. Four lots previously indicated along the north side of Whisper Trail in Subarea B would be incorporated into Subarea C. A concept plan has been presented for consideration to show the capacity of development of the site for one hundred and twenty-four units, one hundred and twenty-four residential units, which were also allowed by the RA-1 zoning. The concept plan would have to actually come back to you with, as a final development plan for approval, and currently, the staff is recommending that a subdivision plan be provided for that subarea as well. The concept plan is currently being reviewed by staff, and there are a number of issues that are identified in your report that the applicant has been asked to address. They're in the process of doing that. We don't think that would hold up the major amendment, however. The major amendment is just increasing the capacity of, of existing subarea for a higher density of development. Because the application requires administrative approval of a minor amendment to the subdivision plan with approved street patterns, the only capacity, only the capacity for development in Subarea C is being increased, and staff is recommending approval of the major amendment, including the revised subarea map. And we've had no calls on this, and that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions? Thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Good evening. Tim Stenberg, fifty, twenty-four, South Bar Oak, and I'll answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Tim?
Tim, I drove up by the site, looked at it today. There's not a, I think that road that comes up to your property stops just short of your property. Have you talked with staff as to when that, the rest of Southeastern is going to go up by you?
Uh, yeah. It's currently in the CIP as priority number three in two thousand eight, and the plan, maybe staff could answer that better than me sometime in two thousand eight, to my south property border.
Okay. Thanks, Tim. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? If not, is there commission action?
I'd move for approval of item fourteen.
I'll second.
Here's a motion and a second. Any commission discussion?
I'm going to assume that staff would recommend approval on this unless they thought that that Southeastern was going to be extended up to the entrance of this. And with that, knowing that, I'd support this.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item fourteen is recommended for approval. Item fifteen is a conditional use permit in the I-1 Light Industrial District to allow automobile storage at thirty-four twenty and thirty-four twenty-four West Rungy Place. Staff report, please.
Thank you. The Planning Commission deferred action at their two thousand eight, excuse me, January two thousand eight meeting, allowing the applicant to discuss the application with surrounding property owners. Additionally, there was discussion at the previous meeting regarding screening techniques along the interstate. I just want to remind you of the conditional use standard for an automobile storage yard. Such uses shall be designed in a manner which will not detract from the appearance of the area. The impact of the use should be minimized through screening with a fence, berm, or vegetation, or by placement on the lot. Staff notes that screening is a challenge on this site, as the interstate off-ramp is higher in elevation than the site. However, coniferous trees would provide a softening effect to the appearance, and is recommended as a condition of approval. The conditional use plan has been reviewed by staff and has been submitted to the Planning Commission, and because the application does provide clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed, and a complete plan check by zoning and building services is required prior to obtaining a building permit or changing this land use, staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit, but notes one condition. One, that a row of coniferous trees is provided forty foot on center, adjacent to the Interstate Twenty-Nine Right-of-Way, located along the western property boundary. You'll note in your staff report, it says the north, but the interstate is not adjacent to the north. So, that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Shawna. I do have a question for you. That kind of leaves it wide open on the size of the trees. Is there a minimum height that we could?
Six foot for now would be adequate.
Should that be added to the?
You most certainly could add that, yes.
All right. Any other questions for Shawna?
Shawna, what was the reason, last time when we looked at this, why those trees weren't considered by the applicant to be something they wanted?
Uh, I, I think they, they trouble, they struggle with the topography. They also discussed, if you recall, security concerns. There was also neighbors that came, neighboring property owners that came were also concerned about security, and I think they've got all that worked out, but you can ask the applicant if they still have those concerns. They are here this evening.
Any other questions? Thank you, Shawna. Is the applicant here, please?
Good evening. Paul Geese, four seven three one five, two hundred and fifty-sixth Street, Renner. In reference to the neighbors that were, that had come down last time to discuss their concerns, we did talk quite extensively, actually just outside the chambers here, and resolve most of those issues. There were still concerns about possible theft vandalism with the caliber of customers that we deal with, dealing with law enforcement impounds and such things as that. We did talk briefly here and agreed to continue on. I talked to Dave Mendholt, one of the individuals that was here, who had stated that he had contacted the rest of the neighbors and issued their, or discussed their concerns, so he organized that meeting. I therefore asked him if he could, again, talk to those other neighbors that had those concerns as well, and I would meet with them at any time, any place, whenever they wanted to. And those calls that I had made to Dave on, on three different occasions went unanswered until this afternoon, when Dave contacted me and stated that he had talked to the neighbors, but none of them felt it was sufficient enough to actually come down. As far as I know, maybe there are other neighbors here that, that weren't here at the last meeting, and he said himself that he wasn't going to pose an issue, and he would be willing to work with me, whatever issues we had down the road. Taking into consideration some of those concerns about theft and vandalism, I contacted Greg Schmidt from the Sioux Falls Police Department, who does all their statistics on, on crimes in certain areas, and asked if you would please run for me the six towing companies that do towing for the city of Sioux Falls, and give me any type of reports that we could get to either confirm or deny this, this question about the, the crime that we might bring into the area. And he ran those reports and did a report within a five-hundred-foot radius of every towing company that does towing for the Sioux Falls Police Department, all six agencies, and then also ran the current location. And I, I've got copies of that, if, I don't know if you want to put them up, they're individuals per location. But I asked him if, if he felt that there was additional crime in these areas with the towing companies, and he felt that there was not. He said that the crime in, in these particular areas, referring to primarily vandalism, burglary, and larceny, were consistent with other, other commercial areas, and he didn't see that there was any relevance pertaining to the, the towing companies having any higher crime rates in their area versus the, the area that we're questioning, that we're trying to purchase for this. So, we, we felt that those issues were addressed there. And in response to that as well, I also contacted our immediate neighbors where we're currently at and asked them if they felt that there was any security concerns or issues of any type of crime, and, and I have letters of referrals from those neighbors as well, stating that they didn't feel that there was any additional crime in our area because of the type of facility that we are. And I do have copies of those as well. That was basically the neighbor's biggest concern, was, you know, any type of crime that we might bring in. Based upon what Greg Schmidt from the Police Department provided with us, I, I feel at this point in time it's speculation that it might, based on the statistics that he gave me through January first of, and through December thirty-first of two thousand and seven. So, it was one whole year that he went back and, and looked at those statistics for us. The concerns of the appearance in reference to the screening that were an issue, most of the businesses in that area consist of construction companies and, and trucking companies, and I felt that we would fit in to this area, being a light industrial, given the, the type of work that we do. There, again, I, I'd taken some pictures of some of the other facilities there, if they feel it's relevant to show the pictures or not. And basically, the typical construction-type equipment sits around in, in the lots in those areas, and that's why I felt that we would fit in, being, you know, storing, storing vehicles there. You know, we are planning on fencing the, the perimeters of it. We are planning on using a screen along the, the property line where our customers or the neighbors would come up, as well as the screening that was mentioned along the interstate with the coniferous trees. We were hoping for just a regular-type shade tree to allow us to monitor our premises along the interstate where these coniferous trees would be. It would block our cameras, but we, you know, do agree that if, if the commission feels that we need to put the coniferous trees in there, that we will, you know, do what, what is recommended for that. There was also a concern that was brought up last time in reference to how many vehicles we're going to be storing here at any given time. It is two and a half acres. It is a very large facility, and yes, you can store a lot of vehicles there. I went back and looked into our records and, and found that we had impounded nine hundred and forty-eight vehicles throughout the course of two thousand and seven. Of those vehicles, that's an average of seventy-nine per month, approximately, two per day, if you break it down into a twelve-month period. Obviously, we're, it isn't consistent, because when we're on, on call for law enforcement, we're on for two weeks at a time, and then we're off for four weeks. So, if you break it down, it's not going to be consistent every month that we're doing that. The average length of storage time from the vehicles that are impounded would range anywhere from one day to up to eighty days if nobody claimed the vehicle, and the reason it takes so long for those vehicles to be disposed of is because there's an application process that we're required to do through the state of South Dakota, and that's approximately how long it takes us to get a title for it, on the range of sixty to, at the very max, ninety days. Taking through, there were seventy-two pages that I ran that were the nine, or nine hundred and forty-eight vehicles that we impounded. If you take an average of those, we're looking at about thirteen point three days per vehicle that they sit on the lot. So, these vehicles are not sitting there for, you know, three, four months at a time primarily. Yes, a few of them will sit there for sixty to ninety days, but that's while we're getting the abandoned vehicle title to dispose of the vehicle. Once we obtain that, then the vehicle is removed right away. And I, I felt there was maybe some concern that we're looking at a salvage-type thing where these vehicles sit there forever, and that's not the case. We try to dispose them as soon as we can. And that's really about it.
Okay. Any questions for Paul?
Paul, I think you've done a great job answering a lot of our questions. My concern last time was the view from the interstate on this particular site. I've been out there a couple times now, and it, it sits low enough, in my opinion, other than getting off the off-ramp on Madison, it's fairly non-existent, and I did an extensive drive through that whole area, and you're right, there is an awful lot of trucking and equipment storage out there. awful lot of truck and equipment storage out there. I can say my fears are kind of put to rest for whatever that's worth.
Okay.
Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions. First off, the maximum amount of cars that you would have there, you said 79 a month average. What would be typical that you would have at any one time?
I guess I never checked on that. I mean, we've got four storage lots right now that we divide them up accordingly, just because the location where our office is at is so small, we can't store that many vehicles there. I would say at any given time, we've probably got 100 vehicles on location. Obviously, that fluctuates on a day-to-day basis, but 100 to maybe 125 maximum. But we are growing.
And how about the lot? Is there plans to hard-surface it, or what's the situation with?
The actual storage facility would be with a gravel or a crushed concrete-type material, if so allowed for. I don't think we've discussed that part of it at all. Okay. All right. So that part would be a crushed concrete or gravel-type material within the confines of the actual impound yard in front of the building we're planning on for the parking that would be paved, as well as the driveway going out. And there is the setback along the south side of the building, which is required. And that was also one of the concerns from one of the individuals that was here, but through the zoning requirements that resolved that issue immediately.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Paul?
Do you have any idea of what size trees you were planning to buy with six foot B?
Yeah, that's, I mean, if that's what they want us to put in, I have no problems with that. You know, pine trees or coniferous-type trees are usually difficult to get to grow anyway, so the larger we can get them, actually, the better off they'd probably take roots. So that's not an issue.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would care to speak on this item? I don't see any. Is there commission action? And if whoever makes a motion, if they want to add the size of the tree to the one stipulation, that'd be great.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 15 with one stipulation and to add on to that stipulation that the size of the trees would be a minimum of six foot in height.
Thank you, Jessica.
I would second that.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? All right. If not, is there, or a call for the vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Item 15 is recommended for approval with the one stipulation. Item 16 is a conditional use permit in C4 Plan Commercial District to construct an outdoor on-sale alcohol establishment at West 38th Street in South Carolyn Avenue, and that item was withdrawn by the applicant. Item 17 is a special use permit in the Beacon Center Plan Development District to allow on-sale alcohol establishment as an accessory use to a restaurant at 4901 South Louise Avenue. Staff report, please.
The applicant is proposing to include on-sale alcohols as accessory use to a full-service food menu in an existing restaurant, that's the Qdoba at the intersection on 57th Street and Louise. It's a half-acre site currently developed with established parking and building. There are three criteria to evaluate the proposal. First, that it not create an undue concentration of similar uses. Second, that it not be in an area where children could be expected to frequent patronize or recreate. And three, that it be compatible with characteristics of surrounding uses and not injurious to surrounding properties. Staff finds that it conforms to these three requirements. It is in a location in a commercial center having similar uses but will not create an undue concentration since it is accessory to a full-service food menu. And it is primarily accessible by motor vehicle in a parking lot in a commercial neighborhood on an arterial street, so it will not be in an area where children could be expected to frequent patronize or recreate unsupervised. And it conforms to the characteristics of surrounding uses. Applicant should be prepared to address any neighborhood comments at the public hearing. The menu should be required, as well as a security management plan in order to apply for the alcohol license to the city council. Staff is recommending approval with those two conditions, and that concludes staff report.
Any questions for Steve? Thank you, Steve. Is the applicant here, please?
Steve Hunter, 1908 South Austin Drive. I guess what I would say is, at Qdoba, we've been on 41st Street for eight years. We've got a pretty good history of our on-sale alcohol. Less than 1% of our sales, and very rarely is there more than two beers, or more than one beer with a meal. Our patrons are in and out in 25, 30 minutes. It's not, it's a fast casual, not quite the same as a sit-down. We're not a bar and don't want to be a bar.
Maybe I misunderstood. Do you serve beer now on 41st Street?
Yes, we do, yeah.
You do? But you don't on the Louise?
Yeah, no, not at this time, but that's where. Hope to have soon.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? All right. If not, is there commission action on item 17?
I move to approve item 17 with the two additional conditions.
I'll second.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Item 17 is approved with the two stipulations. Item 18 is a conditional use permit in the C2 General Commercial District to allow motor vehicle sales with an existing commercial parking lot facility at 1701 West Madison Street. Staff report.
Thank you. The applicant will like to have an auto dealer's license at this location. If you recall, when you get an auto dealer's license through the state of South Dakota, you are required to have five spaces for display of vehicles. The applicant would like to be able to provide the display spaces within an existing commercial parking lot of an existing contractor shop. This location is right across the street from Canary Stadium's parking lot. The applicant has provided a conditional use plan that does show the existing buildings. The square footage wasn't provided of the greenhouse, but they are existing buildings, and they are reflected on the conditional use plan. The cars would be displayed in the parking lot within Lot 4A of the Airport Edition, and this is a condition of approval. There is an existing paved area on the west side of the contractor's building, which would not be an appropriate area to display vehicles, as it would require the backing in and out right into the right-of-way rather than within the parking lot. Because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed, and does require a complete plan check by zoning and building services prior to obtaining the change in use or building permit, staff does recommend approval with two conditions. One, that no more than five display spaces are allowed. And two, that the display of vehicles is only allowed in the area specified on the conditional use plan. And that concludes staff report.
Any questions for Shawna?
Shawna, so these are the only five spaces they would be allowed to use, correct?
Correct. Yep. And they have to be in those spaces if they do display them. But my understanding is it's kind of more of a virtual kind of parking, or dealer's license, that they need to have a place so they can buy and sell the vehicles, but not necessarily have a car lot in the traditional sense.
Anything else? All right. Thank you, Shawna. Is the applicant here, please?
I'm Kevin Baumgartner from 1701 West Madison, and I'm also the contractor in that building. I own K-Scale, along with the Baumgartner Christmas Trees. I'm associate. I believe Shawna's pretty much said everything I would've, so I guess I just open it for questions. We're actually not looking to open a major lot, but state law does require if you sell more than five vehicles in a year, you're supposed to have a permit. It is not our intent to ever have five vehicles on display there all at one time. If we, however, we have a, between my business and my brothers and the landscapers, we own 15 vehicles, and so just as our fleet and complying with state law, we're looking to keep them on a turn. So it allows us to buy and sell wholesale, and this is a prerequisite to state law, so...
Any questions for Kevin?
Kevin, we've run into this a couple other times, saying, for whatever that's worth. I think we understand.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? If not, is there commission action on item 18?
A motion for approval on item 18 with the two stipulations.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Item 18 is approved with the two stipulations. Item 19 is a conditional use permit in I-1 Light Industrial District to allow auto sales and grocery store at the general location of 1614 North Cliff Avenue. Staff report, please.
This property is in a area of North Cliff Avenue that is redeveloping, and in the process of redeveloping encourages small businesses, startup businesses, and tenants of existing businesses. In the process of allowing that to happen, we do customarily defer site improvements to that time when the property is redeveloped for new uses. And so the applicant here is proposing to expand an existing automobile sales and display business on the site into a portion of the parking lot which is paved and is available for that business. At the same time, the applicant would like to reestablish a grocery store business, which was approved some time ago, but kind of the conditional use permit lapsed. And so we are required by the ordinance to rehear that use for the grocery business. They're not proposing any changes other than what was previously approved, other than the expansion of display and sales. And so we've had no calls from neighbors. The applicant should be prepared to report any comments from neighbors that they have concerns about. The owner has signed the application in agreement, Dakota Plating. And there are several suggestions that the engineers have made to the owner of the property, and that deals with a street that's located on the east side of the property, which is currently unimproved, but does have curb and gutter, and obviously was intended to be improved at some time if it should be used by businesses or for access to other development sites. If it is not going to be used that way, then the owner of the property is recommended to vacate that portion of, his portion of the street, and we would look for a vacation of the entire street so that it could be used for other purposes. It is currently not improved. In 1991, the site was approved for no more than 10 to 12 cars on the lot adjacent to the existing building, and the applicant is proposing to increase that capacity. In so doing, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use with two conditions. One, that it provide, the applicant provide a dimensioned site plan showing the required parking for Dakota Plating, and the required parking for the proposed grocery store, and expanded display area for motor vehicle sales. I haven't been looking at the screen as we go through here, but two plans that have been approved in the past were fairly detailed along those lines. We're just asking that the applicant indicate on those plans. The applicant did provide us with a drawing that they had done to show the increased capacity of the motor vehicle display and sales. But if the applicant would, in order to get their permit, provide a more detailed plan, perhaps taking one of those previous plans and expanding on it to show the required parking for the groceries, the display and sales parking that they're requesting, and the required parking for Dakota Plating, and then everything's fine. The second condition has to do with providing anchored concrete bumper blocks at the perimeter of the existing parking lot to prevent vehicle encroachment over the property line or over the sidewalk. You know along that stretch of cliff that the sidewalk's right on the curb and the black top of the businesses right up against the sidewalk. As that area redevelops, we want to ensure pedestrian safety, and this was a condition for approval on the previous plan. So we're just reestablishing that as a requirement for him to do business at this location. Otherwise, we wish him well, and that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Is there any questions? Okay. Thanks. Is the applicant here, please?
My name is Mohammed Mamrouk. I come about news or sell about the grocery tickets, 1614 North Cliff Avenue.
Do you have anything to add to staff report?
Second.
Do you have anything else to add to the staff report?
We need about the same, you know, about boarding by the big sign about the front of the business. But this time, you know, we are not ready to board in, but for later probably.
Good.
The same about, you know, the company name, the same.
The sign?
Yes.
Does anybody have any questions for Mohammed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience care to speak on this item? If not, is there commission action on item 19?
A motion for approval on 19 with the two stipulations.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Item 19 is approved with the two stipulations. Item 20 is a minor amendment to Subarea C Prairie Meadows PD Plan Development District to allow parking and side yard setback at 6805 South Minnesota Avenue. Staff report.
Thank you. The applicant is proposing to construct adjacent parking lots for two office buildings. The parking is not allowed in the side yard, and the applicant is requesting an amendment. The site plan is drawn to scale and is a reduction of a scaled drawing. The required front yard is 25 feet and is depicted at a little bit less than that, and we'll discuss that with the final development plan. The applicant is only requesting a reduced side yard setback, and that is to be able to provide parking within a shared parking lot. There are 31 spaces required for conventional office uses and 46 spaces required for medical office uses and personal services. There are 47 spaces depicted on the plan. Because the application accommodates shared parking between two office sites, staff is recommending approval of the minor amendment. And that concludes staff report.
Any questions for Shawna? Thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Nathan Stensel, 325 First Avenue.
Anything to add?
No. I think it's pretty obvious. If anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Any questions for Nathan?
Did I, excuse me, did I understand you're sharing a parking, parking lot with a property line?
Yeah. We've done the two buildings there to the south of this property. This would be a third office in the same complex. There'll be more in the future. Just basically asking for the minor amendment to go into a little bit of the easement so that the buildings lay out throughout the whole site a little more efficiently.
Do you have a plan for sidewalks?
Yeah, there will be sidewalks on Minnesota Avenue, but that is something we are working with the city on currently with the reconstruction of Minnesota Avenue, so...
Okay.
But eventually, yes, there will be.
Okay. Any other questions?
So what about the green that you need to have along there? Will you have room for that?
Yeah, you know, the green area will be more provided up against the buildings itself. There is a, when you move the next buildings to the south, that borders 70... Seventy-seventh Street. There's a lot of green area there, um, a lot of green area in the front, and then along Lynncrest will be more green area there. So not so much maybe in between the buildings, that'll be more parking lot, but there are a couple of median areas and so on throughout the property that will provide the green area.
So if you're required to provide more green, you'll be able to accommodate?
Yeah, we don't have a problem with that.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the audience care to speak on item twenty? If not, is there commission action?
I move for approval of item twenty.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second, any commission discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item twenty is approved. Item twenty-one is the final development plan in subarea C Prairie Meadows Plan Development District to construct an office building at West Seventy-seventh Street and South Minnesota Avenue.
Thank you. Okay, now that we have the parking lot figured out, we can talk about the building and the rest of the site. Uh, the Pla, uh Prairie Meadows Plan Development District does include quite a number of other regulations. It puts additional limits, uh, a law of, to the building height. It requires pitched roofs. There's restrictions on building lighting adjacent to the residential on the other side of Lynncrest, and speaks to signage as, as far as those, trying to be sensitive to those homes along Lynncrest, which will be more applicable when the next site of the four develops, because this, this particular site does not have anything adjacent to Lynncrest. We discussed the twenty-five foot front yard along Minnesota Avenue. The plan does depict a twenty-four point four-five feet front yard. I think that was just a, a mistake on the architect's part, and they are working on revisions. They can accommodate the full twenty-five foot yard, front yard. Signage that was provided is limited to forty-eight square feet and six feet in height. The proposal was for fifty point six-seven square feet. That's just a little bit too large, and the applicant will be required to revise the plan prior to building permit or sign permit issuance. The exterior wall materials include wa, uh, wood siding and concrete masonry units in two colors. The floor plans provide first floor open spaces for tenant finishes and conference rooms and a reception area. The second floor provides typical office space finishes. When we consider the proximity to schools, parks, churches, and on sale alcohol establishments, the Prairie Green Municipal Golf Course is approximately two bo, blocks on the east side of Minnesota Avenue. The applicant is here this evening to discuss impacts to the neighborhood for this third of four sites. Sidewalks are not indicated, and as the applicant said, they are working with the city to provide sidewalks along Minnesota Avenue, and that is a condition of approval. Because the application does allow for additional phase of the development, staff is recommending approval of the final development plan with four stipulations. One, that the front yard is provided as required by the zoning ordinance. Two, that the sign area is limited to the allowances provided in the O Office District and other sign regulations provided in the Prairie Meadows Plan Development District regulations. Three, that the trash enclosure is of a size to accommodate recycling and trash facilities and is constructed of similar materials as the building. And four, the sidewalks are required and must be indicated on site plans that are submitted with building permit requests. And that concludes staff report.
Any questions for Shawna? Thank you. The applicant, please?
The only thing I'd really like to add to it is, is that we are working with the city on those four stipulations, and they all will be met. We have no problem with doing any of that, so. And that is under process, so. I apologize it wasn't done tonight.
Any questions for Nathan? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? If not, is there commission action? Item twenty-one.
I make a motion to approve item number twenty-one with the four stipulations as noted.
I second.
There's a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item twenty-one is approved with the four stipulations. Item twenty-two is a final development plan in subarea Lundstrom Second Subdivision P.D. to construct two four-plex apartment buildings and minor amendment to reduce front yard setback from twenty feet to eight feet and reduce the required trees along Miles Place from three trees to one at West Ralph Rogers Road and West Miles Place. Staff report.
Thank you. Uh, the parcel was zoned to the Lundstrom's Plan Development District back in nineteen ninety-three. Final development plans for this subarea have been approved in nineteen ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-nine, two thousand, two thousand and five, and two thousand and six. Originally, the plan was approved to construct four eight-plexes. However, only one of those structures was constructed. Then in two thousand and six, that was the most recent approved final development plan that's on the south side of Miles Place, was approved allowing the construction of three four-plexes and one eight-plex. The other regulations in the Lundstrom's Plan Development District are included in your staff report. They include things like residential structures shall have pitched roofs and street trees are required at the interval of one for every forty feet along Ralph Rogers Road. The applicant intends on splitting the parcel into two lots. The lots are required to have seventy-five feet of lot frontage along the street to accommodate this future lot split. The buildings do not meet the minimum front yard. In other words, because of that lot, they had to shift one of the buildings down to meet the setbacks along the side, or, excuse me, along, the, the side yards are provided, but not the front yard. Sidewalks are required along Ralph Rogers Road. Adjacent driveways are not indicated on the plan, although there are many, uh, there may be adjacent driveways to the south and west. The site is generally level and rectangular in shape. The site adjacent to the east has underground parking, and the change in grade is not indicated on the plan. The northern lot meets the setback requirements and yard requirements. However, to accommodate lot frontage, the lot to the south does not meet the minimum front yard requirement of twenty feet. The application does not indicate that there is extraordinary circumstances applied to the property that do not generally apply to other properties in the same zone or vicinity, and that the result of the lot due to shape, uh, topography, or other circumstances which are not of the applicant's making. The lot split is the result of the request for the minor amendment. Each lot does include seven parking spaces, four of which are in a garage. The dwelling structures are located to the west of the lots, and the garages are to the east. Parking lot screening is required. The surface parking spaces are required to be screened, uh, are screened, excuse me, the surface parking spaces are screened by the building and the garages on the east and west. However, they are not screened on the south, and this is a condition of approval. The number and size of trees are indicated to be two-inch caliber ash trees. These are larger than what's ordinarily required, ordinarily we require inch and three-quarter trees. The request includes trees planted along the front yard, but does not include the Ralph Rogers street trees or those in the boulevard, and that is also a condition of approval. Staff notes that there is a slope between the sites to the east and the subject property that's not reflected on the plans. The plan notes does indicate that a concrete wall, a retaining wall would be provided at the backside of the garages. This wall should be of similar texture and color as other retaining walls in the proximity, and this is a condition of approval. The building type is a multifamily, four dwelling units. Both of them are. Exterior wall materials are indicated at, as cement lap siding and a, a solder brick course. The stories are two structure with two units on the main floor and two units on the second floor. A trash enclosure will be constructed with, in brick veneer to match the building, and each enclosure is required with the lot split, so the enclosures should be also constructed to accommodate recycling materials as well as trash. As far as completeness of the plan, you'll note that there are some things required for a final development plan because of the nature of the site that have not been provided, such as outdoor lighting. That is, uh, standard residential lighting is pro, proposed. No parking lot lighting that I am aware of. Landscaping plans shown are, to show the type and location of any walls or fences, placement and sizes, species of trees. Uh, this is, as indicated earlier, is, uh, required and is a condition of approval. Proposed ga, ground tours have not, contours have not been provided, and, uh, any subareas that have multifamily development are also required to provide an open area for recreation. This also has not been provided. The plan does, the plan amendment is included and is not as the same as those set forth in traditional zoning districts. This underlying zoning district is the R.D. Residential District. The subject application does not meet the minimum standards of the ordinance. If the applicant expresses a hardship which requires an amendment and conditions for approval are provided with a building permit request, staff does recommend approval of the final development plan with four stipulations. One, that the surface parking lot is screened at the southwest corner. Two, that street trees are planted as required in the subarea regulations. Three, all retaining walls or exposed foundations are of similar texture and color of the other retaining walls provided in the proximity and are approved by the planning director. And four, that the trash enclosures are constructed to accommodate recycling and trash facilities. And that concludes staff report.
Any questions for Shawna? Shawna, you, you're recommending approval.
Yes.
But in the past, with requests like this, there's usually been a hardship.
That is correct.
You see no apparent hardship in this particular situation?
That's my observation. That is not self-imposed.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Shawna. Is the applicant here, please?
Good evening. Todd Stone with Innovative Design, representing Denny Krebs with Valley Builders, owner of the property. We just received a response letter today in, in the mail. We don't have any issue with any of the stipulations at this time. The, uh, the owner, Denny, has met with the condo association to the east, and they have already decided upon the retaining wall matching the existing, excuse me, uh, matching the existing. Trash enclosures obviously are large enough to accommodate both a trash receptacle and a, uh, recycling receptacle. The lighting issue is, uh, typical residential lighting on the buildings and on the garages. We've been trying to keep away from having any tall light, uh, issues since, uh, the owners contacted some of the adjacent property owners, and lighting has been an issue with, uh, some of their visual cues. To be honest with you, the trees in the boulevard, uh, were news to us. We were not aware of that until today when we got the response letter. Excuse me, I have a terrible cold. I think the main issue, uh, for discussion tonight is the setback requirement on Miles Place. Miles Place is a private road and is maintained somewhat by the association. They've posted signs there not allowing parking, stipulating that that is a fire lane. And, uh, the owner's intent is to do two four-plexes on this site. We originally had, uh, submitted a final development plan, uh, which only showed a sixty-three foot lot width for the, the property to the north. I'm gonna call, uh, A and B, north being A and B being the south half. When we submitted that, we were under the agreement that that would be allowable in a minor amendment. Shawna came back to us and said that this would be a major amendment, and so we had come, we'd gone down and met with her and, and stated which would be the best way to proceed. At this point, that's what we're, we're bringing to you tonight. Uh, I guess that's all I have at this point. Take any questions?
Rod, as you probably tell from my conversation with Shawna, we've, we've looked at things like this in the past.
Correct.
Usually, there's been a hardship, something that was incorrectly done in the beginning. I think we just saw one a little earlier tonight where we were asked to let two parking lots join one another. And, you know, it, it, it could make sense. I'm not sure, why wouldn't Dennis just prefer to do an eight-plex and meet the existing guidelines for this particular land?
Okay, I can let Denny address that issue if you'd like.
Denny, can you come to the mic? Just give us your address, too, please.
Uh, Dennis Krebs, sixty-four eight West Thatcher Drive. Thank you. For me, when I talk to some new users, it's easier with four-plexes to find financing for myself than going into an eight-plex, because it will go into a thirty-year mortgage, which, uh, just makes it easier for me to do the financing than it would be to do a complete eight, eight-plex, because it, again, goes into a commercial product at that point in time, my understanding is, so. That's basically it.
Dennis, there's two lots right directly to the south. Do you also own those lots, or are they owned by someone else?
No, I do not. My intent was a year, two years ago, was to do the same building that's on there to match up, because part of our driveway is that they are using, and there's an easement in force. But when I went back to do the financing on that, that building has been outdated and code's updated, has made it more or less not feasible to do, uh, so we went to a different option.
Thank you, Dennis. Any other questions for Todd or Dennis?
I, I do have one more comment if you don't mind. We are more than willing to receive any suggestions that you may have at this point, whether we accommodate a twenty-foot side yard setback off of Miles, or it would be a, a front yard setback on a corner lot. We would then have a reduction in the lot width, again, whether that is a board adjustment issue, or whether that is a, uh, major amendment issue, or a minor amendment issue. We would just like to get some kind of clarification, and, uh, would be more than willing to listen to any recommendations you may have.
Rod, I, I'm, I'm not sure how the discussion is gonna go here, and it certainly isn't reflective on Dennis. I, I don't know Dennis, but I know his company. They do a good job. I'm one person that, that's a little reluctant to make an exception like this without some real obvious hardship. It, it sets a precedent, I feel, for us, uh, to have many builders come in trying to accommodate something that might make more sense for them on property that's, might not, isn't designated for how they wanna do it. But I, as we discuss this, I just want you guys to know it's nothing against Dennis or his company. It's just the whole issue overall.
I understand.
Thank you.
I do have a copy of that other plan if you would like to look at that.
Any other questions for Todd or Dennis? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item?
Again, good evening. Thomas Valkner, fifty-nine oh five South Los Lane. Uh, my property is to the east of the eight-plex. That already is constructed. Uh, he does have it circled. The gentleman came to me last night and showed me his development plan for the area. I didn't know about the, the setback. Uh, I do understand how the setback is laid out and what was asked of you tonight, uh, to make a motion on, um, myself. I understand how he has laid out the buildings the way it, it is, to where it puts the parking together in the back as not to make an unsightly appearance towards street side of Ralph Rogers Road. The mentions that I had had with him last night, uh, included, uh, lighting issues that we have had with our area, reflecting light back- had with our area reflecting light back into our, the houses of that development exclusively. He has agreed to keep it at a minimal. I have talked with the other neighbor, Wade Hooker and Mary Nightingale, which live one house to the south of me, and he is along the same lines as myself. The lighting is really the one concern that we do have. Miles Place did restrict parking, which is now Cascade Point, I believe, which is the lot to the south directly over there. But there again, I do understand the way he does have the lot layout, and myself, I don't have any objections, although the noted that he reduced the lighting.
Okay. Any questions for Thomas?
Thank you, Thomas.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else care to speak on this item?
Bruce Berger from 4801 Woodwin Lane. Been through this process before. Ken, I'd like to specifically address your question. There's over 3,000 square feet per unit. The city guidelines are 2,500 square feet per unit. I'd like to challenge anybody that thinks that they could come up with a better plan for this lot to do it. I mean, I think it more than meets the land use requirements and, you know, what it's supposed to be used for. The setbacks are very hard to meet.
Any questions for Bruce? Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to speak on this item? If not, is there commission action or discussion on item 22?
Kenny, I have a tendency to agree with you. I think that our setbacks are developed and put in place for a reason, and though I can appreciate that it doesn't flow as well as they would like it to for their property, they are developed, and we do need to be consistent in our enforcement of how we put those regulations for. So I think at this time, I would have to say that it doesn't conform with the setbacks. It's not something that I can support.
Any other discussion or motion?
Well, I think, as I said before, it, I'm sure it's a nice-looking program. The eight-plex is a nice-looking program. It was originally designed for an eight-plex. It met the setbacks. I think, well, let's change the setbacks so we can get some better financing. I'm not sure that's an adequate reason for us to change the rules that the property has on them. There are two vacant lots across the street. They're obviously different owners. I think if this one is allowed, it's going to be real difficult not to allow it across the street on two more buildings, and I think that's where this ball starts to roll down here a little bit. I think an eight-plex could sit in there very, very nicely as the one that's sitting there does.
I noticed that there hasn't been a motion made yet, and if there is discussion regarding the minor amendment, perhaps you could defer and ask the applicant to come back with a different application, which wouldn't include a minor amendment rather than a strict denial.
Is there? I would make that motion. I mean, I'd like to work with the fellows, but I think it's a piece of ground. They certainly knew what they were buying when they bought it. If they didn't know the rules, they should have. If they can get two fourplexes to fit the guidelines that's on the property, I'd be totally supportive of it.
So is that a motion to defer, Ken?
It is a motion.
Is there a second to defer item 22 to next month?
I'll second that.
All right, there's a motion and a second to defer for 30 days to the next meeting. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Item 22 has been deferred until next meeting. Item 23 is the final development plan, Subarea A, 10th and Menlo PD, Plan Development District. You construct a five-unit townhouse project at 1,001 West 10th Street and 211 South Menlo Avenue. Staff report.
You may recall that we recently rezoned this to the 10th and Menlo Plan Development District, and it was adopted with the intent and purpose as follows. Affordable housing. This subarea is intended to create a fundamental neighborhood revitalization, which will foster home ownership. While design of the housing units is developed in this subarea, it will provide housing opportunities to persons who are economically disadvantaged. The 10th and Menlo Plan Development District does allow for unique urban design, and other regulations are included in your staff report, which include edge treatments along the sidewalk, landscaping within courtyard spaces, and design compatibility with adjacent residential There are driveways adjacent along the western property line, and sidewalks leading to the front entrances are prevalent in the neighborhood. This is a design criteria that has been provided within this final development plan. There are bicycle routes in the area in the proximity, but not directly adjacent to this residential property. The site has been cleared of substandard housing, and topographical information has not been provided. Landscaping plan includes turf, ground cover, 14 trees. A landscaping schedule is provided, and there are a variety of deciduous ornamental and coniferous trees, which are a condition of approval. The roof pitch is, it does include two gables and dormers on the east elevation. This is also a condition of approval, that these design characteristics are included with site plans and building plans provided with a building permit. Proximity to schools, parks, churches, and on-sale alcohol establishments. The La La Bella Restaurant is located to the south. Lincoln Elementary is one block to the northwest. The applicant should be willing to discuss impacts to the neighborhood. Other regulations contain design considerations with this, in this planned development district. They have been provided, including front yards adjacent to public sidewalks should be provided an edge treatment, designed to define the lot edge to separate it from the sidewalk and street. Open spaces have been provided and include a six-foot wood fence and trees. Building designs incorporate surrounding residential characters and include similar architectural elements, including pitched roofs, materials, exterior finishes, porches, and window treatments. The dormers and gables and front porches provide this new structure, the residential character of the neighborhood. Because the application does allow for unique infill design and offers the opportunity for affordable housing, staff does recommend approval of the final development plan with four stipulations. One, that there are 14 trees provided as indicated on the landscape schedule. Two, that the roof lines on the eastern elevation include two gables, that's a typo, and three dormers. Three, that edge treatments include pillar and picket-style fences. And four, exterior materials include lap siding in two earth-ton colors on the east and brick fascia on all elevations. And that concludes staff report. And it should be brick veneer, excuse me. I caught myself. And that concludes staff report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Shawna? Okay, thank you. The applicant, please.
Dick Dempster with Architecture Incorporated. We agree with the stipulations, and we think this will be a terrific housing unit for the new Pettigrew Heights neighborhood. Jim Schmidt, who is everyone's favorite Lincoln County Commissioner and will be the developer of this, is here tonight to tell you further about this project.
Jim Schmidt, 716 East St. Andrews Drive, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I'm not challenging Dick's statement, but I'm sure there would be that would disagree. Couple of comments about this program. This will be the first time, or the first development, that will be in the neighborhood revitalization area set up by Mayor Munson. Our board of directors have worked on this for a long time, and I just want to mention this to you, because this is a true partnership. This is not just a Sioux Empire partnership that's working on this. This is a community effort. And let me begin by Arc Inc. and Dick Dempster, who is donating all of their time having designed this and pro bono work. We also have seven banks, leading banks, that are contributing $100,000 interest-free for us to do the construction on this particular project. We have Clint Ackerman from Signature Homes, which has decided, or has consented, to build these particular structures at his cost. So the partnership is really trying to put this on an affordable category, and we're also writing several grants to try to write down the cost of this. This will be for first-time home buyers. The idea behind this particular move is to have young families move into this place and revitalize this area. The other thing that Dick has done, and I think what, when Shawna was reading to you all the add-ons that are on to this thing, this is meant because it'll be a very highly visible area coming down the street. That's one of the first things you see as you turn to go onto West 12th Street. The other part that I'd like to have you consider is this, that this situation has come out with, that we hope that this will stimulate other developers coming into the area, wanting to do the same thing. Not only that, but we've tried to raise the bar as high as we could, so that you have something to really look forward to as far as the revitalization of the entire area. We agree, this is going to be a very, a project that is going to require a good deal of pencil sharpening, because we did mention affordable, and when you start adding all of the nuances that have been put on there, it will be a challenge, but one we're up to.
Jim, thank you for that explanation of this program. I think we're all pretty excited to see it get off the ground and get going. Good work.
Thank you.
Jim, would your plan be to do more units like this, or is this?
This is the first one. This was the only land that was available at this time. If there are subsequent areas that we can acquire, we would look at doing similar situations.
Jim, I would just like to share your optimism for the development of this area. And Dick, I told you when you came, when you brought the preliminary plan forward, I just, I love this design. I just think it's going to be great for this neighborhood.
Thank you.
Any other questions for either Dick or Jim? Thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? Okay, if not, is there commission action on item 23?
I move to approve with the four stipulations.
I'll second.
There's a motion to second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Item 23 is approved at the four stipulations. Item 24 is a resolution of the City of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of Timberheart Edition at East Grand Street and South Juliet Avenue. Staff report, please.
This is a property that was rezoned within the last year to allow for a higher-density residential development, and they are proposing a subdivision of the property to allow that development to proceed. Basically, they're indicating subdivision into 26 lots for the purpose of future residential development in the RA1 Residential District, and one outlot for a private park, which conforms to the ordinance's requirement that they consider providing outdoor amenities for multifamily residential development. We appreciate that. Number of comments have been provided. It does conform to the city's subdivision regulations. With comments provided and currently being addressed, we expect the plan to be signed and approval by the city engineer and moved forward to the city council. Staff has not received any calls or comments from the neighborhood. Perhaps the applicant knows of some and can report those to you. But because the plan offers coordination of urban infrastructure and fosters efficient and orderly urban growth in an area that has been sitting vacant for quite some time, staff recommends approval of the preliminary subdivision plan as signed by the city engineer. And that concludes staff report.
Any questions for Steve? Thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
My name is Damian Gribble, Earhart Griffin &amp; Associates, 300 Newark, Dakota Avenue, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, 57104. We've been working with city staff. We have a copy of their comments. We have revised the plan and submitted those. I believe we can read all the comments, and unless you have any other questions, I would appreciate your vote for approval.
All right, any questions?
Damian, there's a plan to get some streets, I mean, from this area, I can't tell. Are there, it doesn't look like there's any streets out there. Is it in the CIP?
I think they're working on those plans right now, and we will coordinate with the engineers on those to tie everything together.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? Is there commission action on item 24?
I'll move for approval of item 24. I'll second.
There's a motion to second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Item 24 is recommended for approval. Item 25 is a resolution of the City of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of the Three Fountains Edition at northwest corner of 85th Street and Western Avenue. Staff report.
This application for preliminary subdivision conforms to the rezoning request heard earlier this evening for the Three Fountains Plan Development District. It is required to be addressed at this hearing for the rezoning, and staff finds that it conforms to the requirements of the subarea regulations for lot, street, and development layout, phasing of development, and so on. The one thing that they will have to address, probably with the engineers, would be the access, the issue of access to the subdivision, and also the design of the streets and the final plans. But on a preliminary basis, we find no fault and recommend approval of the subdivision plan as presented. That concludes staff report.
Any questions for Steve? Thank you.
Clayton Jamison, 300 South Main. Any questions?
We made you wait all this time, Clayton.
It was worth the wait.
Any questions, sir Clayton? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone care to speak on this item? Okay, if not, is there commission action on item 25?
Move for approval on item number 25?
I second.
There's a motion to second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Item 25 is recommended for approval. Item 26 is adjournment. There's our motion.
Motion to adjourn?
I will second.
Motion to second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.